Let's just, I mean, rock and roll, let's go.
All right. Welcome to the final session in today's COVID-19 oversight hearing of the government's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And we welcome this afternoon the Minister of Health, Brad Hazard, Mr Elizabeth Cough, and Dr Kerry Chant. I think all three of you have previously, well, Minister, you're under your oath as a minister, and I think Dr Chant and Ms Cough, you've previously been sworn in. So that means we can hand over to you directly, Minister, if you wish to make a short opening statement.
No, I'm fine, I'll just take questions.
All right. Well, then I will hand over to my colleagues.
Great, thank you, Minister and officials for appearing. Just a quick bit of explanation as to why the primary concern that led to us requesting the other ministers, some of whom have jurisdiction, but also a discussion with health was when a range of these industries came in, particularly a range of venues, they really put some pretty confronting evidence about how many might close in a short period of time. So 85% of them might close in the next six to nine months was the evidence we took. Some of those, so we've talked to the Huts and Liquor, sorry, John, we've talked to Harwin and to Dominello responsible for some of this area. But what became clear is that one of the bits of good news in the changes that were possible under the Public Health Order, the shift towards 50% occupancy for a range of these venues, 50% capacity for entertainment facilities contained in the direction of the minister under the Public Health Order. Many of these venues thought they'd get the benefit of it, but because of their licence class, because of the complex interaction with the licensing law in New South Wales, they won't actually be able to utilise that. They're stuck under the old rules, so they thought this was some good news. It turns out the interaction of the Public Health Order and the licensing laws means these primary purpose music venues are all in categories such as pubs, clubs, small bars, or on premises licences related to restaurants. That mean when health looks at it, they fall in categories which wouldn't benefit from this change. So that's a lengthy explanation about what the, one of the central issues we were keen to get some advice on is. Really, the question is simply this, is that understanding correct? Noting that it is quite a complex interaction between the two systems, and liquor licensing in New South Wales is extraordinarily complicated. And then we might then come to, you know, is there any way of, would it be appropriate to deal with this?
We'll start with the first.
Is there any way to deal with it? Yeah.
Is that your understanding, Minister, that that's how they operate?
I have to say that from a health point of view, what we look at, what health looks at, and I as Minister on advice from health, are the issues around how to keep people safe. And obviously, that advice has varied across this last ghastly nine months. And very early on, back in March, I think it was March 27th, I think it was, we got the maximum numbers, about 212 cases. Clearly, there was an urgency about trying to cut off the chain of transmission. So that was when we went, I think, to, or shortly thereafter, to basically restaurants and cafes could only do takeaway, and that was it. And over the periods, gradually progressed as we've, as health has progressed. I think I heard the Treasurer this morning say that the economic issues are now benefiting from the health approach. So I think that what we have done is respond to the health issues. Having said that, we have a, within the Crisis Cabinet Group, there is a task force, which the Premier has talked about, I think, many times now publicly. And that task force looks at what other easings or restrictions can occur across every area, really. It's much, much easier to close things down than open them up and keep people safe. So that group makes recommendations and goes out and talks, obviously, the same groups, I guess, that you've had here, I don't know who you've had here, I'm sorry. But those people are all being consulted by that task force. The task force comes back and generally would talk to me, not always, but generally, and I would give the health advice. And sometimes, because I think everybody's got to know each other so well for the warlike conditions, that sometimes the conversations are direct with Dr Chant these days, not the usual ministerial lines that would exist in government in other times. So the intersection, though, of how that works would be principally, I mean, we give the health advice, and then the minister would be principally, I think, Minister Dominello, who would be dealing on the licensing issues.
And could I put some of the specifics to you, just as what's in the Public Health Order, which does impact on them, which might just help? So the change, which was regarded as positive and was, yeah, I mean, this is how it was reported, Live Music New South Wales venues to open at 50% capacity from next month. In the, so that's the reporting, separate to whatever happened.
Where have you got that from, Mr Grant?
Well, that's an article from some of the music press, based on the, which I'm happy to hand up to you as I explain this.
Can I just ask you, I mean, I was struggling here, because there's been a lot of changes. Is that, you're referring to the one where it was released on the 28th of September?
Yeah, 28th of September.
Sorry, a few days ago.
To take effect on one, this is the most recent order, 25th September signed off by you to take effect one October. And it was the change, the direction of Minister about entertainment facilities, clause 14, where an entertainment facility has either got to do one person per four square metres or the lesser of 50% of the capacity.
To a maximum of 1,000.
Or, yeah, to a max, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, and the way that seems to have rolled out, it goes direct to the heart of one of the hardest hit sectors, that, you know, any sort of live performance. But if you're in a theatre, it seems to have helped. But for any of the music venues that we heard from direct, that are primary purpose music venues, it doesn't impact on them because they're in various classes of liquor licence that don't fall within that definition of entertainment facilities. And just to put that one to you, just for completeness, so entertainment facility under the Public Health Order, a theatre, a cinema, a music hall, a concert hall, a dance hall and the like, but does not include a pub or registered club. And then the definition of pub picks up all those other licensed premises. So that's the gap, it seems to leave a theatre able to operate at 50%, maybe they've got people there for an hour, maybe they're seated, they're probably serving alcohol, they might be socially distanced, and there's some sort of performance going on. These other venues would say they're doing the same thing.
You mean, you mean a pub or something?
A primary purpose music venue.
What do you mean by primary?
Places like the Oxford Art Factory is a good example, so it's a...
Basically a pub.
Yeah, it's, well, it's an on premises licence, it's a theatre for public entertainment use under the licensing category, but they're not at all certain. In fact, we just heard from licensing, they're probably not, they don't, they fall on the wrong side of that.
John, could I say, this is, I mean, could I, I want to actually do, and I think that everybody wants to do the best we can, there's no reason to be not doing the best we can for all these various industries. There may well be intersections that you're highlighting that I'm not aware of. I'm happy to take it on notice if you'd like, and to look through that and take it back to the, to the task force that are actually looking at it, because they're the ones who'd be across the actual intersection and knowing the law, there's every chance that that may well be the case. But if it is not working in the way we would intend it to work, then I'm more than happy to look at it.
Yeah, I think that is certainly, that's the spirit in which we're raising.
Yeah, I don't think I've had, I mean, maybe one of my staff have, but I haven't seen or heard from anybody on that particular intersection. So it interests me, I'm happy to take it. And actually afterwards, if you want to show me what it's about, I'll happily raise it and pursue it.
Can I just add to the context today, if I may, Chair, I'm not going to take any time, but just for context, I think Minister Dominello was staying health orders first, health comes first. If there is an intersection, exactly as you say, there might be, but otherwise seated, ticketed space is okay.
That's actually probably what Natalie just said, is that those are the key issues which were public health position. What we're, on advice of public health is prioritised. But where we are at this stage, we're obviously looking to try and strike that balance even further and open up further for the economic situation. But I must say, after today, with another three cases, it just reminds us that the virus is about and we need to be sensible. Having said that, yeah, I'd like to have a look at the detail. When did you see Minister Dominello? Because I haven't had a...
Immediately previously.
We had a 15 minute break.
Because normally, if somebody had raised an issue like that, not in a committee structure, but if someone raised that, he would pick up the phone to me and talk to me. I was probably on my way up here to do this, so I couldn't, yeah, apologies. Very happy to look at it.
And we did have that context, that was, there was a licensing issue, and it's the health issue, and the intersection of the two is where...
There's no question that the health issues override absolutely everything.
Sure, and I think that it's important to say that's acknowledged, yeah.
Yeah, but also, I can't tell you the number of times that I've had individuals or business groups or others come and talk to me and put a position. And I always, what I do is I would obviously get advice from health first, and then I would be talking to the other people on the task force and just looking at how we can strike a balance. It's just, there's no politics, and it's just sensible.
So Minister, within that spirit, that's why we shared the transcript of that, the last hearing where we had those venues come and they put their concerns on the record. In the intervening time, you've amended the public health orders in accordance with the 25th of September. But I think the problem has now become apparent that even though I think the intent of some of those amendments to the public health orders were to, well, that's what we're exploring, were to provide the relief to these venues because of their alcohol licence, they're not getting the relief that they thought they might receive. So that's the context, and...
Mostly, could I say, public health view is a little more constrained, not quite as adaptable when it comes, when it involves alcohol. Because the view is that particularly in pubs and clubs, they've got to be really sensible here because people consume alcohol. The chances of them complying with the basics, as Natalie, as my colleague, Ms Wood, just said, that sitting down, I mean, doing all the sort of things that stop the intermingling become a worry for us. But, you know, having said that, there are not reasons why we wouldn't look at it, of course we'll look at it.
Yeah, I think there is a distinction there where you might expect more of that, some of those behaviours in some of the other licence settings, but many of these venues are strictly ticketing people, that's just their business model.
Well, that's a key issue, the ticketing, the sitting there and the not mingling.
Yeah, so there is alcohol, as there might be at a theatre.
Yes.
It's, once you've cracked that live performance issue on the theatre side, which is very tough, but we seem to have got there from a health point of view, these venues are then saying, well, hang on, we're doing almost exactly the same thing, but it's sung, not spoken word, shouldn't it, shouldn't we fit into this category?
So can I ask, David, did you say in the hearing just before this, you had somebody or you had a transcript?
No, so the transcript was from...
From the previous hearing?
Yes.
Oh, that's the one before we changed, okay.
Then you changed the, and then the changes went in the right direction, but didn't cover this gap. So the example is a small bar whose primary purpose is live music. So they open when they have a band, they may have a couple of bands over the night, a small bar, its primary purpose is live music, and therefore it's all ticketed. The only way you can get in is if you buy a ticket, you buy a ticket to the band. Sometimes a ticket comes with two drinks as part of their making it viable. They are caught within the definition of pub because of their licence, their liquor licence, and therefore they don't get the benefit of the 50% capacity alternate options for patron numbers. Yet they say, we're ticketed, we have social distancing, we know who's here, it seems appropriate that they get the benefit of the 50% rule. That's what I was...
Yeah, subject to four square metres, because of the inside, subject to four square metre rule.
Well, the subject, well, that's what I suppose I'm going to put to, I was wondering what the public, I think we're all wondering what the public health view is.
I'm expressing.
Yeah, is it, is it the four square metres, is it the 50%?
You feel more comfortable listening to Dr Chant?
Well, well, is it the four square metres, is it the 50%? Is it... Are they cumulative?
I'll ask Dr Chant to comment, oh, sorry, there you go.
So you're correct that the, on the 28th, from Monday, the 28th, theatres, cinemas and concert halls were able to increase the capacity to 50% and that was, and they have to have a COVID safe plan. And that is also about managing the way that people move around the facility, move in our hospi, any hospitality that served, transport, they're meant to consider how people are getting there as well. And the issue is, I think you're raising another category that really hadn't come to our attention specifically. We'd be happy to look at the public health risk in these sorts of venues, but the principal reason for the comfort about 50% capacity in these venues was the nature of the movements, the fact that they were seated, they were still, you know, recommending that groups get clustered together in a household or the group that is travelling and then, sorry, coming together, and then 1.5 distance to others as appropriate. So we felt that in these venues, because of the nature of the interactions or the nature of the behaviours, there also wouldn't be a lot of vocal, in many of these, there wouldn't be a lot of vocalisation or screaming or singing or other, sorry. And if that's not, because I have any problem with that, but other than from the COVID risk that we know that loud talking, singing and shouting and chanting can generate particles if you're an infectious person there. Obviously, the risk in all of these venues depends on your likelihood of having an infectious person there. But notwithstanding those other behaviours, then in the presence of an infectious person, we have very good evidence that those behaviours can potentially spread to more people in the right circumstances. And so we'd be, I mean, I'd be happy to provide advice to the minister on the specific venues you're relating in terms of how they meet, but that were the general public health sort of principles, why we were comforted by the increasing capacity in these venues.
And just to be clear, Minister, the provision I'm talking about, and these are very, because they've done multiple iterations and there's complex subcategories, the category I'm talking about is clause 14 of the orders of the 25th of September, which have their alternatives. One is number of persons that are equivalent to one person per four square metres or the lesser of 50% of the capacity of premises or 1,000 persons. So if you fall within the definition of entertainment facilities, you get relieved of that one per four square metres if you can meet that alternate criteria of 50%.
That wasn't, I think, absolutely the intention, so I need to revisit the...
I think it was a particular, I mean, I think for the minister, I think...
I've just got the copy of the section 14.
Yeah, no, so it's, so I think it's an alternate, you can meet it through alternates.
That's right, but it particularly was intended to apply for those venues where, like theatres, cinemas and concert halls, where clearly the nature of the interactions and the behaviours in those theatres did not have any other risk components to them, and we felt that at this point in time, in the level of community transmission, you could do it. The venues you're describing are not a venue that we particularly had in mind, and I'm happy to provide advice to the minister on the particular circumstances in those venues. I just indicated the sorts of issues that we would have in mind would be, you know, the service of alcohol, the chances of actually keeping people in their seats and the mingling, and the types of behaviours that might be hard to manage in those circumstances. They would be all factors that would take into account our advice about the public health risk, but this was largely intended for theatres, cinemas and concert halls.
David, what I would say is this, that each of these orders that are made are generally made with a degree of urgency about trying to address current factors. And the process is quite complex. It was a lot easier to start off with because I could literally hand draft the orders out. Yeah, they were good in those days, weren't they? But since that time, we now have a much more complex process where we have DPC lawyers, parliamentary council, health lawyers, and you name it, they all have it to Bobsworth. I just, reading that quickly now that you've said that point, I mean, I've always read it in the context of what the public health officials have talked, it's bigger venues, not smaller venues. And when I look at it, while you were chatting, then I was just going back to see, well, is there a definition technically of an entertainment facility? No, there's not. But what there is, is an entertainment, there's another hospitality venue which includes pubs and bars and so on. So one could therefore draw the conclusion that those are not included in entertainment facilities, if one wanted to be technical. But I don't actually think this is a technical, this is not a High Court decision, this is about how to make it a practical decision to keep people safe. So all I'll say to you is, let's not get hung up on the technicalities of the words, that would be for someone sometime in a superior court if someone gets charged with something. But in the meantime, what we need to do is to see what the substance of what you're talking about, you and John are talking about, and I think it's a valid point. So why don't you let us have a look at it, John, maybe afterwards, or drop me a line tomorrow with the details of the ones that you think should be looked at?
Yeah, that'd be very welcome.
Yeah, happy to do it. I mean, I have colleagues on both sides, I had a Labour colleague today ring me just before this for an issue that, trying to get something fixed, I tried and get it fixed.
Yeah, and it clearly is, it really took the discussion with Minister Dominello on liquor and gaming to really bring it up into lights, but it is the interaction of the public health order.
But again, that's not unusual, even when laws are created in the calmness of no COVID, no one on 100 year pandemic. By the time we get into a one on 100 year pandemic, yes, I mean, those things, someday someone will sit down and write a book on all the complexities of it, but what they will say is we kept everybody safe.
Well, and as we look at what's happening in other jurisdictions at the moment, with people going in and out of, you know, places of government, we do have a degree of comfort at the way things have been arranged here. Minister, there is a definition of entertainment facility in the order.
Is there?
And it says, means a theatre, cinema, music hall, concert hall, dance hall and the like, but does not include a pub or registered club.
Okay, and then, so I apologise for that, but then when you go down to the other issue somewhere, where is it?
There's also a definition of pubs somewhere.
The one I talked about, which is whatever it was, but anyway, we get the drift.
Yeah.
Technicality is probably irrelevant, the practicality is what we need to focus on, and it sounds like an issue, so let's try and fix it.
That's good.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Thank you for appearing today. Obviously, it's been a very busy timing today included, and thank you for all the work you've been doing in keeping everybody safe in New South Wales. It's very much appreciated, I think, by all sides. Just wanted to, we could just explore the concert hall 50% capacity Public Health Order. Does that include orchestras? Is there any limit on the types of performances that can take place in these venues and theatres?
We actually had a meeting, what was it, Kerry, about three weeks ago? With all of the representatives across orchestras, choirs, I mean, woodwind groups, everything. And they were raising issues around how it was, how the health orders were impacting on them. So there's been a lot of work done by public health to try and make sure that we can safely allow them their activities. Some of those activities we're looking at currently are about possibly encouraging, where there's a likelihood of aerosols and so on, activities outside rather than inside. So, but I'll ask Dr Chant to comment on the specifics because she's been working on it with her team.
Thank you. Yeah, so obviously, professional, professional people are still governed by health and safety requirements, and so there would be, the general principles is that the orchestras have requirements to make sure that people are not sick that are attending work, just as any other workplace. There's also some suggestions around the distancing that would be required to minimise any transmission in those settings and some distances from the audience. So those specifications have been consulted. Obviously, when people might not be having an audience, they're considered a workplace, and so it's really around what your obligations are to create that workplace as safe as possible within the practicalities of what you've actually got to do.
Okay, so it sounds like with orchestras, if there are wind instruments, that if there is a COVID safe plan, that whether you have to be comfortable with it or no?
So basically, we give the sort of general guidance about the distancing we request and the sort of requirements of, you know, common sense. I mean, there's obviously been some reports of very distant spread of aerosols, but this is about finding a practical distancing option.
Is there a different, is there a different level of, different level of distance required for, say, someone playing a tuba compared to someone playing a violin?
So the issue with the, the only instruments, and these are the differences between, the theoretical risk between reeded and non-reeded instruments, so I'm not a musician, so I'm going to probably misspeak this, but the concept is where the airflow goes directly out of the, and is not trapped in a...
Not trapped by the reed.
By the reed, then it's got a greater potential, or it hasn't got, like, lots of twists and turns in it. So that's the distinction, there's a theoretical possibility that, like, for a recorder, you're just blowing out the air. So we recommend a distancing, I think, I have to check, but I think it's about three metres for that. And then for singing and others, we have a different sort of level, and that's based on the best, you know, a rough guide, obviously internationally, various people, orchestras and other groups have actually determined their own safe operating principles for distancing.
I'd say, Kerry, it's not, Dr Chant's really saying is there is no definitive absolute because it's a one on 100 year pandemic. The virus and how it moves and how it affects people is still actually being determined. So you could look internationally, you look at other parts of the world, and you'd find different rules. So in a sense, what happens, what happens is public health gives guidance to people in the workplace, keeping in mind, I mean, technically, we could all be, because we're at work, we could all be sitting right next to each other, but it would be crazy if we were. So in a, in a workplace, say the Sydney Symphony, for example, our public health will give them guidance on what we think might work, and then safe work has an interpretation of that as well, in terms of occupational health and safety. And of course, if they get it wrong and someone gets sick, very sick, then they're going to probably have a right of action against their employer. Different ballgame if you've got members of the public coming, which is where public health really get involved and start saying, well, this is to our best, best scientific evidence, we think this is the case. And fortuitously, so far, it's worked pretty well, but I don't think you could actually take out a tape measure and say this is absolutely definitively right. And it may vary, I mean, someone may blow air through a, as Kerry said, a recorder with great enthusiasm.
Yeah, so I did just want to turn therefore to the school.
Which is awkward at worst of times.
The school, this, before COVID, that was, that was pretty nasty. Just what, I did want to turn to school bands, because, because I'm sure you're aware that members in this place are being lobbied by school music teachers and students themselves in bands about not being able to play with instruments, has that, has that changed? Has it?
So there was updated advice, so we were dealing with, you know, as you're aware, we were dealing with a situation where we had higher rates of transmission in the community, and we were seeing a lot of schools impacted by that. Given the disruption to the schools, we took a cautionary approach, particularly given we wanted to preserve our year 12s students from having to be, you know, isolated. So we suggested that a range of restrictions at that time with the purpose of minimising the risk of introduction into the school, and then also minimising the crossover and mixing within the class, because potentially, if you've got someone in, who might be playing with year nine with a year 12, and they're then in band, you can then get a broader group of people potentially impacted in terms of contacts of cases and the impact on year 12. We, prior to the school holidays, we announced that those restrictions were eased and provided updated advice to education, which permitted the resumption of a lot of activities, including school camps with the COVID, with risk assessment and COVID safe plans, resumption of music sort of activities and other things. We can provide the correspondence that underpin that if that would be useful to the community.
Thank you, does that include the playing of wind instruments in school?
Yes.
Okay, great, excellent. I just wanted to move now to the one person per four square metre rule and just ask firstly for the, just a reminder in terms of the public health research that's behind that one person per four square metre rule.
So the, I, sorry, here's...
No, you can do it.
So the concept behind that was, this was discussed nationally, and I've got to say that, you know, for all of these things, it is, we have to understand, we know what we know at a certain point in time, but an estimate of a capacity, it was felt that... that by minimizing the number of people in a, um, space allowed things like the physical distancing. So the one per four square metre was based on that. Um, I think that the community understands the sort of need for a capacity, um, cap and, and linking it to sort of a theoretical concept of the space that you would need to permit you to move around or, um, in a, in a certain venue. So that was the concept behind the one person per four square metre. We've obviously since learnt that, um, there are different, um, other things that contribute to risk, and we've tried to mitigate those risks through the COVID safety plan, um, and we've also identified the differential risk between outdoor venues and indoor, so that's why, for instance, things like, um, we've got more comfort with stadium, um, outdoor environments, community sport, um, so they're probably some of the factors in the general consideration of the one per four square metres, but also the fact that our knowledge, um, and comfort with, in what settings we would deviate from that or have different capacity limits has grown as we've learnt more about how the virus is spread.
Kate, can I, sorry, Kate, can I, sorry, David, you asked a question?
Oh, no, is it the behaviour or, it's not just the architecture and the space?
Yes, it's behaviour as well, absolutely. That goes back to that sitting and not mingling and so on. Can I just say, having sat in on probably, I don't know, a few thousand hours of meetings now on this sort of thing, there are lots and lots of different views, again, because it's based in effectively science, um, and it's a vague, it's a science, it's not well-known. So, um, Dr. Chant, thankfully, not every day now, but at least for about seven months, if you tried to talk to Dr. Chant between, between twelve PM and about two thirty, she was on the, uh, AHPPC meeting. Um, I had the pleasure of hearing one of those once, it was the last time I wanted to go. Um, and in that, there must have been about, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Chant, but maybe twenty to thirty, um, experts, medical experts, public health specialists, virologists, infectious diseases specialists, from all over the country, and in every state and territory. And what they do is they, they were looking at, particularly as it evolved, um, whatever evidence they could gather from anywhere overseas, and of course, it was all new. And so they were gathering evidence from the CDC or the Centre for Disease Control and so on, I think that's in the States, isn't it, Kerry?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, and whatever they were coming up with, whatever the European experts were coming up with, and off the back of that, they were trying to draw out of it what they were advising government, all around the country, actually, um, of what government should consider. The issue then became, of course, for us particularly, we were at the front, we're at the, uh, we're literally at the frontline of the war, because New South Wales is, you know, it's the game of the rest of Australia. So it was us and Victoria that were really doing it, the others all just closed their borders and said, that's it.
Okay.
So, so the information, I'll try and hurry, the information, when you ask for a specific, it's really got to be the best optimal scientific estimate or guess, not guess, uh, outcome of all those varying evidence.
Thank you, that was a good, that was a good, um, uh, informative response. So I haven't been to a stadium since COVID came into, uh, our world, but, um, is cheering allowed in stadiums?
We recommend that you don't promote it, but people do cheer. I mean, this is the reality that what we give advice and, um, that, that we know that the majority of the community, um, adhere to it, or, um, we've had really good community response to our messaging, um, but clearly that is a risk. Obviously, when there's no community transmission or low levels of community transmission, the risk is much lower, but clearly, we've made it very clear that chanting, I think I've been on the record many times of saying that we're aware of the risk associated with singing, chanting.
Do they have to wear masks?
So they're required to wear masks, um, in, in many settings, uh, in a, in a couple of the settings where we've increased, sorry, not, there's an expectation, there's an expectation, but when we've gone, when we're going as a condition, when there's a large, when we go even above the, the requirements. So the capacity cap that's been allowed has been almost based on a one per four square metre, so the original capacity cap for the stadium was much lower, it's twenty five percent. Um, and then there's been a few exceptions more recently where we've added that additional, um, risk mitigation of asking people to wear masks-
Yeah.
-on, uh, when they're travelling and when they're, um, coming to the venues and when they're not moving about.
Okay, so that, because I suppose what I'm trying to get to is what some say is, is, I'd like to, to, to know the, the rationale behind, take for example, dancing, that, there is potential that dancing could be undertaken in a COVID safe way. If you've got tens of thousands of people being able to sit at stadiums and cheer, wouldn't you also be able to have COVID safe plans, for example, for people to be able to dance in venue safe, for example, just hear me out, you know, COVID safe way, having the safety marshal at a venue, uh, having to wear masks and having to stay, you know, twenty people, whatever it is, in a particular area at one time, I just, is that possible? Or are we going to see a situation where things like singing and dancing and standing up in pubs are going to be something that we can't do for four years or five years until the vaccine's found? Because these are, you know, fundamental kind of aspects, if you like, of, uh, many people's lives, and I think people, young people particularly, are struggling with this. Why, have you discussed how to do dancing safely?
Um, just go back to footy for a second.
Yeah.
I fear now that you've raised, uh, cheering, Dr. Chant might shut that down tomorrow.
Well, it's obvious, isn't it? I mean, that's, that's incredibly obvious, that's what would happen at a stadium.
It's, it's, the truth of the matter is that anything that produces aerosols is dangerous in the open air and distant, because most of those arrangements in the football stadiums have been done with great care and caution off the back of public health advice. So I did go to a, well, Brisbane Lions Cats game, and they had wardens, effectively COVID marshals, and they were keeping one, uh, you know, one area safe. Sometimes it's checkerboard arrangements. So it's a, it's somewhat safer when you're out in the open air. If you're talking about dancing as such, for example, most dancing would occur probably inside, not always, um, there's issues around intermingling, there's issues not around sitting down, um, and therefore you've got more people moving, and one of the issues is not just catching it, but also being able, oh, sorry, health, which is us, health being able to do the tracing. So if you've got a very large group of people, all dancing and intermingling, I think it's a bit of a challenge, but anyway, Dr. Chant.
And I suppose, just, just in relation to the dancing as well, it is the standing, standing up. Uh, I'm just trying to, to, to get a sense of what that specific, uh, why it's the sitting down, why people, there is no COVID safe plan to allow people to stand and potentially do a little jig in a bar or venue. It's true, they can't, they'll be told to get out.
No, because the, the primary thing right through this, which has kept us safe, Dr. Chant and the public health team saying, if you're seated, you're less likely to be actually giving it to somebody else. If you're seated, you're going to be only sitting with your own family group, I believe.
There are ways, though, for example, if you've got like a group of ten, I've seen friends of, I've seen groups of ten, uh, more out in bars, shouting, laughing, you know, no masks, all of that, sitting around a table.
Well, that's not good.
It could be, it could be safer, I could see safer situations where people have to wear masks, they have to stand, you know, a metre away, it's like the most boring dance floor I can imagine, but anyway, that people can, you know, able to stand up and at least that DJ can play.
And perhaps I could comment that, um, clearly, we're continuing to review our, our, um, risk assessment and, and to be perfectly frank, we're just taking a bit of a breath after, um, dampening down some transmission. It'll be interesting, we're just working through these three cases overnight. But, um, we are looking for active ways in which things can be done safer. We know outdoor environments are much safer, so if there can be potentially, you know, more limited, um, groups, then we can, we can design that way. So I think from a public health perspective, we're happy to engage with all sorts of sectors to look at ways for things to be done safely. Um, but our risk assessment also really relates to the, the level of community transmission, and obviously, our concern level, um, a few weeks ago was much higher than it was, and then obviously, we need to reassess what's going on, um, related to these three cases, which will be subsequently providing an update later on today. But obviously, um, we do want to learn how to do, um, get back to as normal a life as we can in a COVID safe way, and we're prepared to look at all the different settings in terms of how we can adapt, adapt to do that, and I acknowledge the impact, um, having a Tina, um, having a, a daughter myself who's raised those issues with me, I understand the-
That can't be easy.
The, the, the impact that it, that it has, and I also want to reflect on the anxiety that a lot of young, young people are having in the broader impacts it's had on young people. So we're really very open to look at that and, um, engage with any sector that wants to come up with designs for COVID safety. That's what we've done in a lot of settings. Um, as the minister said, we've recently, um, engaged with the music industry to see what options we can to promote, um, you know, those sort of, uh, practice and rehearsals and that safely, because it is part of the fabric of society, and also, we understand the importance to try and get equal, you know, equivalency in terms of the settings across different settings, so, um-
That's good, because my, that's really good to hear, thank you, because my concern was that I think the, the sporting, uh, lobby, if you like, is of course very powerful, and, um, uh, we've seen stadiums open up, but I think the, the, it could be a huge kind of silent cohort of people that are very desperate to be able to return to, and I get it, it's almost it's safe to do so, but at what point does it become, you know, kind of ridiculous? And I think people, judging from, you know, being out and seeing people, and I'm sure everything you're seeing, everybody, people are starting to largely behave themselves in a lot of places, and I think they understand the need to. Lots of people are in masks, although lots of people aren't wearing masks on trains.
Well, I, I think actually, uh, most people, I was asked this on, I think it was Monday, yeah, by a couple of TV stations and I said, or TV programmes, and I said, for me, when I'm out and about now, I, it's a remarkable difference to what it was, uh, you know, three or four or five months ago. I remember when, when we closed Bondi, oh man, that was a, that was a, I think that was a wake-up call for the entire Australia. Now, most people actually get it, and I've watched people divert around other people in shopping cities and so on, so there's a lot of difference, and, and I can tell you that, uh, um, from the government's point of view, and, I mean, it is the government doing it, I guess, with, with the public health team, um, there's a real enthusiasm to open up more if we can do it, but we know we've got to do it safely, because going backwards, um, I mean, every day I get somebody saying, can you do this or can you do that? And, uh, we always talk about how can we make it safe, uh, and almost everything, everything, almost everything can be made in a safe, a safe way to do something, but just probably not as many people. And until we get the vaccine or a treatment, that's of course your President Trump, um, then, you know, it's, it is the new norm for the time being.
Yeah.
Maybe it depends on the type of dancing, so maybe boot scooting and lined up and it'll come into its own and it'll have a reception.
Your boots could go.
No, no, I didn't want to, I didn't want to put that into the equation.
We're not going to go down the Swedish death metal route again, because that didn't take us anywhere positively in the last session.
Swedes weren't real good anywhere.
May, may, maybe.
But if there's anything that, each, I mean, I appreciate this is a committee, but if there's any individual cases like that, Kate, I literally just had a call about a major group that I won't name from a local, from a member, well, not a local member, an independent member, uh, raising an issue about can we look at that? And I rang Dr. Chant, that's exactly what he was, I've just had this call from a member, um, and it's an event that's a fair way away, but they need to start organising. So we've now moved into overdrive to try and make sure that we come up with, how can we work with this group to come up with a COVID safe plan to make sure that they can all enjoy themselves, but, uh, that's the way it's done.
We might, might just turn to the other issue we spent some time on with, uh, Minister Domeneo in particular, and that's his, uh, current enthusiasm for alfresco dining, um, and he, I mean, clearly this has, uh, he's been engaged quite intensively with agencies, with the City of Sydney.
He's been doing a lot of work on that.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so I think what became clear in that discussion, though, was this is largely, um, in some ways, an economic strategy about reviving the businesses in the CVD. Um, one of the oppositions has also been advocating for this, uh, in part, in no small part, as a health strategy for the suburbs where people are now living and working. Um, it became clear, though, this is really quite an economic focus for, um, the agencies who are engaged at the moment. I just wondered if there was any, um, view either Minister or Dr. Chant about, um, ju- just how, obviously, the shift outdoors is a major risk, in fact, it reduces risk significantly. Um, should this be a part of our health strategy in our suburbs? Getting people outdoors?
I, I'm sure Minister Domeneo would have said to you that, uh, we have been working very much on, as Dr. Chant said before, looking at where we can free up and release a whole lot of, um, constraints-
Yeah.
-that we've had to put in place. And there've been, I mean, people tend to think about just what was it a couple of weeks ago, what is it now, well, actually think back to what it was like in March and April. It's like light years away from what it was in March and April and May and June, um, but we're still working to obviously keep freeing things up. The economic issues are intermingled with the health issues to a degree, and I think the issue around what it sounds like he was talking about was just, uh, what opportunities there might be to give, uh, cafes and restaurants and others, uh, an opportunity to have more people, but in a safe way. And clearly, one of the things that the public health team and Dr. Chant has said a thousand times publicly is that, uh, um, outside is generally safer than inside. Um, so certainly-
It's really that health perspective I'm looking for. I mean, this is all-
Well, that is the health perspective.
It's not, it's not the only risk factor, there's some other important ones, and you've run through them, but it's just, it actually is one of the major things we can do.
But it is the health perspective that, um, right now, I mean, if you'd asked us yesterday, we all probably would have been a little more, uh, full circle and joyful. But today, I don't know whether you've all heard, but there's another three cases today, and Dr. Chant was just telling me before we walked in about how they're doing all the tracing, and it looks like they probably are in some ways connected, but more, more will unfold on that in the next probably few hours. Um, that tends to remind us all, I think, that this is not a virus that's going to go away easily. Um, so I think that it's fair to say, uh, if a government jumps too far ahead and creates expectations with business-
Yeah, yeah.
-that you can do certain things that turn out not to be safe.
Yeah, and I think we've talked about that economic side with Minister Domeneo, so it's really just that health, healthier of our shift.
But that is the health view, in the sense that it's safer to move down that path, but we don't want to then have to go back, because one of the issues, one of the, I mean, there's so many aspects to this that we've had to deal with. One of the aspects is actually keeping the community with us on the journey, and so the communication and to different groups within the community, how do you actually reach out and communicate to all of the various, um, groups that make up the Australian population? And how do you keep them onside? What we do know from overseas experience is you lose your community very quickly if you jump from here to here and then have to go back. So that's a health issue. We need to keep people on the journey with us. And, uh, so far, they have been, although I must say, I think probably, I don't know what Dr. Chant thinks about this, but I, as Health Minister, I think there's been an element of complacency in the last little while. People are sort of thinking, oh, it's all over, uh, and that's understandable, but it's not right.
Well, we're, so, just on the complacency, I mean, my last few trips on public transport where if I, I wear a mask, I will be the, sometimes the only person on the bus, the only person on the train carriage wearing a mask, um, and that message seems to have been quite diluted of late. I mean, that's my personal experience, and I, I think, I don't know what other members' experiences are.
We keep repeating the messages, David, but I mean, that's part of the problem that the community, you think about it, it's a natural behaviour. Numbers have gone down, we don't have to worry about it. Well, actually, yes, you do, but trying to keep that message up, it's a lot easier. It'll be a lot easier today to remind people that they should be doing something, because there's now three cases, two in South West.
I might just conclude. I'm, I'm, I'm just going to conclude on the outdoor and then pass to my colleague. I, the other issue we're talking to Minister Domeneo about, and I'm just interested again in a health perspective, is, um, a lot of the focus has been outdoor dining. From a health point of view, um, is being outdoors is beneficial both from a dining point of view, but also potentially from a performance, uh, point of view. It makes all those concerns about parasolisation, about, um, performance easier.
That's true, that's all true.
Yeah, yeah. Um, is there anything you'd like to, to add on that?
Maybe Dr. Chant, well, I think you just said it, it's, it's exactly right, you're outside, it's not safe, but Dr. Chant?
No, obviously, you're considering, you know, that, that we, we recognise and accept that outdoor settings and that's why outdoor dancing in a safe way, like, we need to work through all these issues, but clearly, we see the outdoor environment, provided that there, you can contain and control mixing or the aggressor, it's ticket, you know, so some aspects of events that give us, um, a greater comfort is if there is, um, seated, seated, not too much intermingling. Um, again, the level of our concern does vary depending on our level of knowledge about the community tran- transmission.
Correct.
Um, but I think these cases overnight just highlights that we've still got to maintain that level of, you know, level of vigilance. Um, and I do want to just acknowledge that the community, I think, has been incredibly responsive, um, when, you know, to some ex- community, I think, has been incredibly responsive. When, you know, to some extent, they, what's the signal is when we do go out and ask them to test, or I'm expecting that we'll see a real bounce in the testing numbers as a consequence of that. And we've seen that in previous events. And to be perfectly frank, that's what we need. We need to maintain the community responsiveness when we get these cases so that we can effectively contain the spread to allow us to then ease restrictions in other areas. Because in the end, I do recognise the intersection between the economy and health. And it's not a dichotomy. Because without health, we know that the community's willingness to go into environments or enjoy themselves or participate in those things declines as well. So we have to get optimised both.
Thanks very much, both of you, for your time today. Or I should say, everyone for your time today. I just wanted to, to move on to a slightly different matter, which was Minister Hazard, you talked earlier about the, I might say it's AHPCC, the pink.
AHPCC. Took me a while.
PCC. Okay, all right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna rely on yours. You said that they're meeting, they were meeting every day. And I think last time we had a briefing from you. How often are they meeting now?
They're meeting about a couple of times a week. But on the weeks that there's National Cabinet, they meet potentially more frequently. And obviously, they can be convened for any urgent matters.
And EU is part of the discussion about what's next, you know? I mean, obviously, this hearing is about specifically the night time economy. But, you know, the inquiry is into more broadly the.
It is always about, well, it's about many things, but it usually includes what might be next. But can I say on, on that, Courtney, that one of the challenges is, Daily Telegraph ringing me right now. Obviously, they're not watching the committee. That's good. One of the challenges is, they give the advice to the chief health officer, the federal chief health officer, Commonwealth chief health officer. He's part of that. He's sort of, I think it's fair to say he was chairs that meeting, doesn't he, really?
Yes, he does.
Yeah, he does. And so distilled out of a whole lot of different views from each different chief health officer, chief medical officer, chief health officer. It goes then to National Cabinet, usually via the chief health officer to the Prime Minister. And I think that's almost the direct path. There might be some other slight, they don't involve me in that. So just working on what I think. And the National Cabinet then can make a decision. But it's very, very difficult, I must say, when you've got states and territories who have such different positions. Because the, the most analogous to us actually was Victoria. I mean, unfortunately, things terribly for all of our Victorian friends, it hasn't worked out as well as we all would have hoped. But, well, it's getting better, which is great. But so telling us to do a certain thing when, well, hang on, WA might, WA's completely closed off from anybody. South Australia was closed off. Tasmania had a moat around, for heaven's sakes, for a large moat. The NT had only 200,000 people and a lot of desert in between. So we then have to, as a government, take that, whatever we're told we should be doing, and work out what we think we should actually do. And so it sometimes is slightly modified in terms of what would be happening.
So can I ask you if that's been a discussion about the, I mean, one of the issues that's been raised with this inquiry is the issue of two square metres instead of four square metres? Is that something?
I think that's fair to say. That's been discussed extensively. But at the end of the day, it comes back to the government. Public health, the way it works, obviously, is public health gives us the advice. And then we have to determine how, well, public health and the National Cabinet both give us advice. In a sense, Dr. Chan's already had her advice going up to the National Cabinet via the chief, via those discussions, and then via the conduit of the chief federal health officer. Now, I don't know absolutely what she says in those meetings. I suppose she'd tell me if I asked nicely. But generally, what matters is what she tells us. Because what is said in the meeting is a group of professional public servants with health expertise, who are distilling out the best evidence to give to the National Cabinet. But then we, we listen to that. But we also ask her and her team for advice to us. And we try and work off that.
So I suppose, I mean, it might be just useful to clarify that each.
Did I get it wrong, did I?
No, you didn't. It's a clarification to say that one of the contexts that the minister refers to is the fact that each of the different states and territories were in a very different context. So as the minister alluded, Western Australia has not had any local transmission cases. It's easy, very easy to control its borders. It has a single road in. It isn't really at, at risk. It's got some port measures. But apart from that, South Australia, up until recently, was, had, has had no local transmission, hasn't got transmission now. But it could, it also had borders up Queensland and Northern Territory, and as the minister said, Tasmania. So where people have been in terms of their levels of community transmission, because the fundamental risk arises when you have got some community transmission, then obviously, the question is, is what are the sustainable controls? What is the COVID safe environment we need to have when you have got community, some level of community transmission, or you're, or you're working through the process to achieve that no community transmission? And then the other challenge is, we will never eliminate COVID from the world, even potentially with a vaccine. COVID will be with us for a long time. But what we will, so we'll always be at threat because even though we are in Ireland and have the advantage of being a border and we can put in effective quarantine, we've seen that regardless of even the optimum there, how difficult it is because of the way the virus can be easily transmitted in some circumstances, we can still see ingress into the community as we've seen in New Zealand. And so we also just need to think about, well, what is the safe, the safe settings? What is, what are the sort of systems we need to detect any incursions very early? So these are some of the factors that we need to consider in interpreting where we are in New South Wales relative to other states and territories. And New South Wales had its borders open to Victoria for quite a, you know, significant period of time as well.
Can I finally say to that, that what I say, New South Wales, we're all different. New South Wales, parts of New South Wales are very different. So we know that we have major hospitals who, in the Sydney region, and in Hunter, John Hunter, that, and in some of the other, I mean, Tamworth and South East Region, but they're not, they may not have necessarily the full capacity to cope with large numbers of ventilated patients with high level intensivists who can do the ECO and do, you know, full ventilation, a full tube ventilation. So if it's in a remote area, we'd be really worried. So we have to constantly keep thinking, well, what if it got out there? What if it had got here? It's not just the whole state, in a sense. We have to make decisions that sometimes people might think, oh, it's a bit, bit over the top. But we're trying to make sure that people can still move around the state and keep our particularly, well, anyway, I won't mention, but particular communities around the state safe.
I appreciate that. Dr. Chan, you just touched on my next question, which is, we got the federal budget last night. One of the key assumptions underpinning that is that there will be a vaccine that's fairly available by the end of next year. Minister, you mentioned that a treatment might be a better option. Are you able to provide us with an update on what's?
I didn't, sorry, Courtney, I didn't say a treatment.
A treatment may be an alternative.
Yeah. Look, I think, in a sense, government needs to work on some presumptions in a, in a, when there's so much unknown. If you asked me a year ago, how long it would take, as the Minister of Medical Research, how long it would take to get a vaccine for something, I would have said to you, it could take, well, first of all, there might never be a vaccine. Secondly, it could take 10 to 15 years, easily, because that's the sort of time it normally takes to get a vaccine. Why everybody is being somewhat more optimistic now is that there's literally hundreds of groups working all across the world. And quite a few of them now share information, which they didn't use to, because they were all different ball game, say, 10, 15, 20 years ago. But they're all sharing information. So hopefully, we will get a vaccine. But I don't think, as Health Minister, I couldn't tell this group or anybody that there's absolute certainty about it. But I think as a government, I think it's right that the federal government can work and predicate on a certain period that they are taking advice on. But look, Dr. Chan, what's your thoughts? That's my meandering thoughts.
My question, my question wasn't so much to the, to the decision to make, that there needed to be an assumption underpinned. I accept that, particularly from the government. I was just wondering if you could provide the committee with an update about where.
It's basically what I just said, but Dr. Chan can do that, yeah.
So there's a large number of vaccines worldwide. And it's pleasing to see how much effort's been going into putting, developing a COVID vaccine. There are obviously some vaccines which are more progressed. And so there's various different phases. There's phase one is where you just trial it in healthy adults, and you're just trying to check that it's.
Clinical trial.
Safe. And then you move to determining that it produces, you know, a sufficient antibody response. And then it progresses into those countries where there's active disease. And then you look at how it, how it performs in terms of its effectiveness in actually preventing the disease. And we're also interested from public health perspective of, does it actually also prevent on passing of the disease, like the transmissibility of it as well? So there are two dimensions that we're looking at. And obviously, very closely watching any safety signals associated with it. So we are still, we believe that some of the major studies will be reporting some data in the next four to six weeks. And that would potentially give us a little bit more information. And what's interesting is that there's concurrent manufacture of a number of these vaccines, along with running the trials. Some of these vaccines are already being produced. And we are just undergoing preparedness activities in New South Wales to prepare for a vaccine, should it come, as you'd expect us to do. Looking at all the elements of that, we've previously had pandemic plans for rollout of vaccines and have had experience with mass vaccination. The process is that the ATAGI, which is the Australian Technical Advisory Group on Immunisation, which writes that GP handbook for immunisation, is current, is the advisory group to government, which will advise on which vaccines and various safety issues. And obviously, the TGA has a regulatory role in licensing any vaccine before it's used. But we are doing all the preparation, which is looking at our cold storage, our sites for vaccination, data upload, so that we can upload data to the Australian Immunisation Register, because surveillance and monitoring will be a key component of this. So all of that work has commenced. But I can't give you a clear definitive, definitive date. But as I said, as the weeks progress, and probably over the next couple of months, we may see more information which might give us some indication.
And one of the other things, Courtney, is even if we got, I mean, you asked a vaccine, there could be multiple vaccines. But in reality, we also don't, because we don't know whether one will even come, whether it will have long lasting immunisation, or whether it might be something you have to have every, you know, year, six months, three months, who knows what it's going to be. So there's too much unknown at this stage.
Okay. My time's about to.
I think so.
Run out. So I'll save it for the.
Geez, that was good.
Yes, I have a couple. I just wanted to turn to in the public health order on gatherings and movement and gatherings, just the, the definition of corporate event. So what organisations can do corporate events, which I think is 300 people, depending on the size of the.
It's a maximum of 300, but also subject to, again, the subject of the four square metre rule. So it could be less in some venues. But we're under active discussion at the moment as to how we could expand that. And I think over the next few weeks, hopefully, we should be able to expand and clarify more venues that could possibly have corporate events.
Okay. And is the definition corporate just mean an organisation or an individual that wants to hold a big event? What, how is that, how is corporate event defined?
I'd have to pull up the Act again. I'm sorry. I don't, it just means an event, hospitality or social activity organised, held or funded by a business or other organisation for staff, clients or stakeholders, and held on premises that are a function centre.
Okay, so.
So at the moment, you'd say a corporate event's basically a business, right? That's, again, Kate, I'm not sure, I don't know your background, I don't know whether you're a lawyer or what have you. But again, it's not as defined as it might be if it were legislation that was worked out over 12 months. This is worked out over a few days, as we try to move. And so it's the best effort by the lawyers who work for DPC and Health to come up with something that defines a business type event. But there's a bit of flexibility. I mean, I think that what you should understand too, is if someone came to us and said, we think that we fit within that category, but when we're just a little bit on the edge, because there's so much, until you start defining or trying to actually do what we've done, which is redefine society, actually, it's so difficult because there are so many, I mean, I remember, I don't know whether it was, might have been one of the Greens or one of the Labour people, started off asking about an escape room in one of the meetings. I'd never heard of an escape room. It sounded all sorts of ominous things.
Sounds more like a political gathering.
Yeah. That sounds like the National Park.
No comment on that. No comment.
That's Cabinet, Cabinet yesterday.
No comment, no comment. But so if we actually, if someone came up and said to me, I got a letter saying, or a phone call saying, I want to do a corporate function, but I don't think we fit quite in this category, what I would do is probably talk to Dr. Chan, and an exemption would be prepared, provided it's basically in the spirit of the thing, but it's not that precise. You know, it might be a, I don't know. But not actually start hypothesising, because that would be very dangerous. So I'll just, I'll leave it at that. There's flexibility around these things if people come to us and talk to us. And it's something that we haven't actually, haven't really addressed in the, in the, in the order.
Okay. And is there going to, is there consideration being given as well, obviously, if things continue to track well around the numbers of people, family groups, for example, that can gather, say, in an outdoor, in a park together, particularly looking at over summer? What, the reason I'm asking a question about the corporate event is that looking, firstly, I wanted to know whether organisations like NGOs and charities would also be considered there. So, but as I understand it, costs are prohibitively expensive now because of the reduced patronage and function centres trying to get as much money as they can. But then with people being able to do summer and Christmas activities outside, Christmas parties and what have you, is that going to be considered in outdoor areas like parks with the COVID safety plan? Has that been considered?
We're already looking at all those issues, yeah, because obviously it's safer. Just in terms of numbers outside at the moment, of course, you're only supposed to gather in a group of 20. But, I mean, all those things are being looked at. That's all I can really say at this point. We're a bit, as I said, off the back of, we had a meeting this morning, and obviously, there are a whole range of issues discussed. But it was also in the context of, oh dear, another three cases have become apparent. We need to dig through that, do all the tracing and try and work out, is this something, well, Dr. Chan would tell you, you can have 20 cases, for example, and she wouldn't be overly fussed if they were part of a cluster and we knew how they'd all contacted. 20 separate cases all over the city, all over the state, we'd be worried. So we're busy doing all that work at the moment. And that will inform what we do as we try and move forward. But that issue has been very much the forefront of what we're discussing at the moment, amongst a number of other issues.
Yes. I suppose it's the relaxed, in some ways, the staggered relaxation of a number of different venues that you've, you've done. For example, of course, the stadium that everybody is looking, the stadiums that everyone's looking at. And I think it would be, if we continue to track well, it becomes increasingly hard for the public to understand the justification for a group of 40 or 40 people gathering in a park safely.
And that's one of the issues, that's one of the issues for us, to try and make sure the community stay with us. Although, can I go back to the essential issue which Dr. Chan said at the outset? And that is that provided there's minimal opportunity for intermingling, people are seated, ticketed and so on. She feels, and if she feels, we all should feel, safer about that arrangement.
It's, it's not just numbers. There's those other.
No, absolutely not.
Initia that I think.
So the, yeah, the principal risk is, you know, the first thing is, have you got cases in the community that could attend a particular function? And then it's the settings, environment, outdoor being lower risk than indoor. And then it's the behave, so there's environmental components. And then there's the behavioural. And we know that alcohol, for instance, pays quite a key factor in inhibiting some of the adherence to those behaviours. So we obviously consider venues where there's all use of alcohol as another risk factor. But again, as I said, the principal risk derives from the level of community transmission you've got because that.
So in terms of public gatherings and outdoor gatherings, one of the.
Sorry, Dave, say it again.
In terms of outdoor gatherings, one of the concerns that's been repeatedly raised with my office is the, the outdoor gatherings for the purpose of protest. Currently, there's no express exemption for protests, and they're covered by the 20% maximum rule, is my understanding.
That's right. That is right.
The difficulty has been the, the way New South Wales police have been interpreting that. And this has happened repeatedly at Sydney University, where groups of, they're protesting on a particular day about an issue, in groups of 20 or less, separated hundreds of metres apart on, on the. apart on the campus. So one group of 20 on one side of the campus, another group of 20 on another side of the campus. And the police are interpreting the Public Health Order as saying, if you're there for a common purpose, even if you're separated by hundreds of metres, that it's in breach of the Public Health Orders and therefore they're being moved on and arrested.
You're going to ask me or ask to define what the police might or might not do, that's a matter of them. Could you want to ask me a question about how people can gather?
The public health, the purpose of the Public Health Orders and the 20 person limitation. Surely that's not intended to aggregate groups of 20 people who are distanced by hundreds of metres apart because there's no public health risk of transmission from one group, one of those groups to another, is there?
Can I set aside, because the police obviously are entitled to interpret the orders as they wish and they can be challenged in a court of law.
I understand that.
But from my point of view, I would say this, just say there were a group of 20 people down the beach, in a park, in a park. And there are another 20 people that were a number of metres away, a reasonable, reasonable depends on the circumstances. And if they're in, say, one oval, as long as the total numbers didn't exceed 500, so the groups of 20 with a group of five, with a large group of 500 total, not a group, but aggregation of 500, I certainly wouldn't have a problem with that as an interpretation of the orders. But that's a matter for me thinking, well, if it's an open area somewhere, but look, there are circumstances that vary and I think it's tricky for you to be asking Dr. Chant to be interpreting that. Or I'll give you the best interpretation I can and that's it. And I don't want to answer any more than that.
Well, could I ask about what the concept of limiting 20 people to an outdoor gathering? Because you'll often say, say at a park.
It's about tracing. It's about knowing that there's 20 people there and we can actually have an idea. I mean, I can probably name, even with my failing memory, but I could name everybody in the room with the exception of the two people hands out and you can tell me later.
Well, you just go to hand side and they'll tell you.
They'll tell me, yeah, they will. So I can trace the roughly 20 people in this room. But if there were 50 in this room, or if there are 100 in this room, or if there were 200 or 300, it gets harder and harder. So that's basic. Do you want to add anything to that, Carrie?
No, I think the concept is also picking equivalents between indoor and outdoor.
About to message you.
But the idea is that in social groups, you still again, like you're most likely to acquire someone COVID from someone who is in your social group because of the nature of the interactions that occur in that environment. So at a time when we've got lots, you know, concerns around community transmission, limiting household gatherings and limiting those gatherings because they're likely to be a group of friends who will be closer than or not practise all those behaviours that we would want them to do sustainably. And personally, I can understand that, that how easy it is to lapse into those behaviours. So it's not a criticism, it's not a criticism, but it's just so we have to acknowledge there is a behavioural component to some of these orders.
But, but you say at a park, you know, you go to Centennial Park, you will find thousands of people potentially on a day, but split up into groups of 20 or less scattered across the park. I assume that the public health advice is provided they're separated and in discreet groups, that's an acceptable public health risk in the outdoors. That's right, Dr. Chant?
Consistent with the advice about beaches and other things, we've allowed people on beaches to be there provided social distancing and there'd be groups at the beach or another environment.
And so I suppose the frustration that particularly protesters are having is if they're doing the same physical arrangements, but they have been told they're caught under your Public Health Orders, Minister, you can understand their frustration, couldn't you? When they're doing the same physical
I remember very early on in this, I came home and it was one of those comedy shows at TV at night and I had a very frustrating day with people actually challenging, what does this order mean? And he summarised it very well by just saying, people shouldn't keep trying to drive holes in it, they should just try and make it work because all we're trying to do is keep people safe. All I'll say is, if I were you and I had formal instructions as learned counsel, then that's a matter for you, but I'm not going, either a court hearing or another matter, but I'm not going to be drawn in this hearing and I'm sorry, David, because it's, if you were in my position, you'd do the same thing. I don't want to be drawn on that. I've given you the best I can at the moment and you can use my words that I've already given.
Yeah, and Minister, I want to be clear, I'm not, and I don't think it's right to ask you or Dr. Chant for legal advice and I appreciate your reticence.
Praise the Lord.
But the
I do have practised history, but
But the
You kept it all these years as well.
Forty years of practising history, yeah.
Yeah, I've kept mine too, you never know when you're in another
That's it, that's why I kept it.
You never know when you're in another
The grand insurance policy, so you can say I'm out of here.
The, but we go back to the purpose and the public health rationale and that's why I suppose what your position is, that the purpose behind the limited gathering is to stop groups intermingling and to have groups of a size that you can contact trace. So you know who you're with. Would they be the two sort of principal reasons to stop the overall
So this is cross-examination, David.
No, 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 I'm just trying to work out what the purpose, what the purpose
Well, I think, look, I said it, it's because we need to be able to trace and the intermingling factor is a huge factor. So it's, I guess it's best, you can, in a sense, the numbers have to be picked to try and make it reasonable in the current environment. And you might remember at one stage it was, well, it was zero, but then it got down to 10, or was 10, now it's 20. And that reflects what public health advice to the government is to try and make it a little more relaxed, but also just to make sure that we keep everybody safe.
Could I ask about the sewage testing
This is Dr. Chant's favourite topic.
Well, I've got to say, it seems to be an extraordinarily powerful tool to
It is, it is.
To determine the prevalence of the disease in the community.
Dr. Chant.
Yeah, you got it, Dr.
So obviously this first originated in, there are people that have been doing sewage testing for viruses for a long time and so the expertise is here, but this was drawn on some experience from the northern hemisphere where they used sewage testing and found out that it was, could detect cases. The question we've got to ask is what is its ability to detect in a low set, a low, where you don't have many cases? And we've had to learn with Sydney Water about its ability to pick up those cases. And, you know, to some extent, we're still on a learning journey. So we will, we have got a protocol where we're currently now looking at scaling to about, in the end, we'll probably get over 100 sites where we'll test on a regular basis, a weekly basis. And that, at the moment, we sampled 24 locations, last week we sampled 24 locations in Sydney and 34 locations in regional New South Wales. And so the principal utility of the sewage surveillance is actually to confirm negatives. And so we would, we particularly deployed it across like the border regions and we also have increased the testing along the eastern seaboard ahead of the school holidays to just check that there's no detection in those areas. The way we're going to be using it is we're now working with Sydney Water to segment the system in Sydney down. Now, the problem is that we do continue to get people coming from overseas and you can excrete the virus for a period of time after you're non-infectious and return to your place of residence. You're not infective to anyone, you don't pose any risk, but it is, can be picked up in the sewage because what we're talking about is fragments of the virus that is excreted. So there is a little bit of work that we have to do at understanding the catchment for the sewage, which, where does it drain from and whether there's any positive cases that have recently been diagnosed or have moved into those areas. But clearly, one of the people that were positive that were reported overnight did live in the catchment associated with the Western, West Camden sort of sewage treatment facility. And so that's, that's very interesting that it was, she was infectious at the time of that sample being collected. So if we can increase the frequency and distribution and have that quite detailed understanding of where cases are, we feel that the sewage surveillance will be a useful strategy for us to give us that assurance that we're not missing undetected cases and to use it to supplement the testing, like we still need people to come forward for testing, but this will give us another tool in the toolbox, actually, to
It'll give you a basis to turn up at a certain locality and say, we need you all to test because we're concerned about what we've picked up.
And that's what we did yesterday. So yesterday, based on the results, we issued an, a sort of announcement with the release saying we had detected these in these sewage plants, these are the suburbs that drain into those sewage, please come out and get tested.
And so it's a mixture of, it's you first of all working out the sensitivity of the testing, so knowing with a very low viral load,
Yes.
you're still working out what the sensitivity of the testing is, is
That's right, and we're even going back historically, but we do believe that it is, it can detect quite low levels of virus. We've certainly detected it where we've had perhaps one person in a catchment of 10,000 people draining, it's triggered a positive. No, that was, we didn't ever find the person in Perishar, but we did know that in, in the north of the state, in the north coast, when we did test in the sewage there, we were aware of a case that was diagnosed and so we know that we picked up that case. We'd already diagnosed it, but it was a known case. But that gives an example that that allows us to estimate the likelihood. Now, with all tests, I've got to say, there are false positives and there are sometimes the limits of detection. And so no test is foolproof and we'll, as we gain greater experience with it, and I want to acknowledge the work of Sydney Water, but also our Health Pathology in New South Wales, virologists who are helping us do this. And then we will also use, you know, sequencing the virus to see if we can
Trace it back more genetically.
Yeah, genetically.
And I suppose in terms of Sydney, you're also getting a map in the sewage system so as you know where to test
That's right.
as opposed to just going at the large, at the end of the pipe.
That's correct. So we're trying to look at how we would do it that makes sense and overlay the knowledge of where we've got potential cases that may have been recently diagnosed. Because as I said, we were expecting that we will continue to have returning travellers who may well have been, they'll be non-infectious, but they can still be excreting for a period of time.
My last question is, as we hopefully will move to a vaccination phase, do you feel like there are sufficient tools at hand to stop the likes of, give you an example, Pete Evans or somebody, coming out and spreading disinformation, purportedly medical information to discourage people or to spread untruths about the risks of vaccination? Do we have the tools needed to stop that?
Australia has a very strong track record in its regulatory approval for vaccines and I think the Commonwealth, the community should have trust in those processes and also
I agree with you, Dr. Chant, but I'm
Yeah, so I do actually think that we do have the tools to do it. I think it requires a lot of engagement. It will require, the lessons we've, you know, learnt in the past is it's important that we work with GPs because many patients will trust and respect. So we need to educate and work and support the confidence by our general practitioners. We know that pharmacists and other allied health providers also provide advice. We know that we'll need to work with other community leaders in also ensuring that they're aware of truth. So we understand that a vaccination programme, particularly in this context, will require a quite intensive and extensive education, fact-based, evidence-based information dissemination. And the Commonwealth is working on, as part of its contingency planning, is also working on some of the enablers for that. As is usual, ATAGI would probably update it in the handbook so that doctors would have confidence the vaccine would be described in the way that usual vaccines, the register, we have an Australian Immunisation Register and so that even enhances our ability to monitor vaccine effects. And we're currently doing the preliminary, you know, data and baseline data for us so that we again are in the best position to pick up any signals. And I think the community should understand that we are very committed to only rolling out a vaccine if it is safe and effective to do so.
Thank you, Dr. Chant. I think there's a couple of minutes.
Yeah, I've just got one final question. Obviously, we're coming into summer, we're seeing, you know, less respiratory illnesses around, we've seen a reduction in testing rates. What things are you or the department, the, looking at in order to keep testing rates high, particularly within our called communities who drinks time?
I think Dr. Chant's partially answered that by saying that we've had to look at how we reach out to various called community members. An example, actually, no, I'm not going to pick out any particular group, but that wouldn't be fair. But I think we've had to look at novel ways to reach it. So particular groups, talking to community leaders, talking to church leaders, talking to their GPs, getting them to communicate the messages. Very challenging because some communities actually have the discs and they're taking news from other parts of the world, not from us. So very challenging. One of the ways though, just generally, is, chugging off the back of what Dr. Chant just said. Oh, Asp is playing up, sorry about this. Is the value of the testing, sewage testing, because what we've found is if we name a particular area, people suddenly take note. If I just said to you, well, Sydney's got a problem, eh, no one takes too much notice. But if I name, or Dr. Chant names, a particular suburb or part of an area, people respond. And so, you know, we had, for example, the Crossroads Hotel, we had queues within two hours once we named that area. I think we found out, I think Dr. Chant told me at about 2.30. By three o'clock, we had a pop-up drive-through and there were queues already there as soon as we hit the media at just after three o'clock in the press conference. So if we target particular areas based on the best information we have, including sewage testing, because that's one of the keys that can actually provide that information, we do get the community to respond. I do say, I think that it remains a problem at the moment. Goes back to what I was saying earlier about the complacency issue, that when you've got a relatively low number or no numbers, I mean, today was the 12th day, I think of no numbers, no, 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 no community transmission until mid-morning. We have a problem because the community do tend to not take it quite as vigorously as we would like them. From my point of view, I would have thought that we need to be up around, actually, no, I shouldn't, well, I would say around about, we'd like to see, you know, 15,000, 20,000 people coming forward, but if we get down to 10,000, well, that's not too bad, but when we're down to about 5,000, it's not terribly, terribly helpful for us to have a really clear understanding of what's going on. But I might be wrong on that as well, so I'll ask Dr. Chant, what's your views, Dr. Chant?
Look, I agree that we've got to continue to message with the testing. That requires us working with GPs, the community, church leaders, everyone to just explain why that to some extent enables us to have confidence in lifting and easing restrictions if we can detect any cases as early as possible. It's much easier to suppress an outbreak when it's just started as opposed to when you've had multiple lanes of transmission, it becomes much more problematic. In terms of, we work extensively with multicultural New South Wales and also in the whole of government because I think we also need to remember that we've got, we can use the education assets, education has so many schoolchildren and they've got newsletters and communication. We can work through religious leaders and we have done so, particularly for certain communities, that's incredibly powerful. And we also know that in, particularly for the called populations, often their general practitioner speaks or is of the community they attend. And so working with, there's a number of community groups within the medical fraternity and so gauging with the Vietnamese or the Chinese or the Pacific Islander GP communities can also then give us targeted messages. We can also listen to what are the issues the community have and I think that's unearthed some interesting things which we then can respond to. So for instance, the stigma seen as having COVID diagnosis, like stigma associated with
In particular
in particular subsets of cold, that wouldn't be something that I would see, because I would say no one's to blame for catching COVID. And so I think having, knowing that and knowing the origins of why that might be considered is really important. The government's obviously taken steps about the payments and so there's no disincentive for isolating and supporting people. We've also been doing a lot of work with business to say, really, business have a role in really supporting the positive We've also been doing a lot of work with business to say, really, business have a role in really supporting the positive thing to do is stay home when you've got to test and get isolated and really, you know, not rewarding that soldiering on culture of come to work when you've got, you know, you've got respiratory symptoms, really acknowledging people as positively contributing if they stay actively, stay away from workplaces, win their own well. Um, so I think it, I think it's quite a complex area and it's one of the ongoing challenges. And I think as the, the response to COVID's had to evolve and I think we.
And still is.
And still is, and I think we have to keep working with a lot of stakeholders to, um, inform us about the next steps. But a lot of it's underpinned by, we do monitor the social media, we do monitor, um, so as New South Wales does, um, checks with the population about what their concerns are, what they're understanding. Again, all of that helps us, um, tailor the messages or perhaps, um, correct, you know, correct some of those misconceptions.
And, and, and as Dr. Chant says, it is, um, Courtney, being tailored as we go along, in the very early stages, when it was first, we thought of virus from Hubei province. We couldn't work out, two of us who were doing press conferences every day, couldn't work out why it was that there were so few, I can say this because we, we then did it and everybody knows we did it, but, uh, why there were so few Chinese journalists coming to our press conference, it was a bit of a, a, a conundrum for us. And we wanted to reach out to the Chinese community because clearly that was an issue of people returning back after a little new year. And I actually remember, we, we weren't sure how to handle it, so we took advice from a whole lot of people, including, um, I called, uh, your side of politics, member, member or two from your side, member or two from our side who had large Chinese communities. And it was pointed out that there were reasons why Chinese journalists wouldn't come at a press conference with mainstream journalists, not by going to what they are, but, um, so we then started doing, which most of the community wouldn't have known, we were doing the community, the, the broader community messaging and then we'd usually come down, I think it was the back of Sydney Hospital, wasn't it, Carrie?
Yeah, around those.
Yeah, we'd come down and we'd do, and, and the second time we did it, we found we had about sixteen to twenty Chinese journalists suddenly show up. Um, so it has been right from the word go, learning from whoever you can learn from, um, very bipartisan in that sense and taking advice no matter where we get it, um, and making it and trying it. And generally, we've actually achieved, I think, a pretty good level of communication, but there are limits and there will always be limits.
Thanks, we're sitting, Natalie Wood.
Thank you, Minister, and thank you, Dr. Chant and Ms. Cough. I just wanted to, um, extend our thanks to you. Um, I know this has been an exhausting time for you and particularly for your staff and your teams. Um, I also have, um, been in contact, uh, and am very grateful for your responsiveness, uh, on a number of issues, uh, like many members. Uh, and knowing how inundated you are, I was very grateful, um, for your responsiveness. But also very grateful to know that we are not the United States, uh, that we are not Europe. Uh, and I mean no disrespect, but that we're not Melbourne, uh, and that's because of your vigilance and your communication to the communities. I just wanna thank you for that and ask that you extend that to your teams of staff who I'm sure are exhausted, but we're very grateful.
Thank you.
Um, well, that concludes the hearing. Um, thank you very much for your attendance today and I think on behalf of the whole committee, um, definitely the communities we all, um, work for, thank you for all of your work, tireless work, and Dr. Chant, I hope you get a break at some point. Um, uh, um, and that concludes today's hearing.
Thanks very much, thank you.